I will now call the May 3, 2010, Blue Springs City Council Meeting to order. We will ask you to stand, we will observe a moment of silence, and then I will lead you in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. I want to welcome all of you who attended tonight, as well as those that might be watching on Cable TV 7, to tonight's council meeting. The next item is the consent agenda. Are there any items that need to be pulled? Seeing none, I'll accept a motion for approval.
So move, Your Honor.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilman Lauer.
Aye.
Councilman Levisay.
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Bowerman.
Aye.
Carried unanimously.
Next, we have a public hearing on rezoning of Mann Meadows Lots 4, Second Platte, etc.
All right, Your Honor, I have one exhibit to offer for this public hearing, which is RZ-4-10-2552, City Council Information Forum with attachments, site location map, staff report with attachments, affidavit, a publication as advertised in Blue Springs Examiner, April 10, 2010, application with attachments, 185-foot notification map, names, addresses of property owners within 185 feet of sight, copy of letters sent to property owners, these are all the exhibits I have to offer on this particular public hearing, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson, Ms. Allen, on behalf of the city.
Thank you, Your Honor, and Councilman. Before this evening again is the request. This is a request by the Manns, property owners of Lot 4 of Mann Meadows subdivision. The request is to rezone this Lot 4, which is about 3.11 acres, from County Agriculture zoning to Blue Springs zoning district of RE, residential estate. Compromise plan designation is residency residential. Just a little quick background, there's one existing home and one existing barn on the 3.11 acre parcel. The entire subdivision's highlighted there in yellow. The dark gray shading is the Lot 4 in question here this evening. A new 4,000 square foot steel exterior barn structure is being proposed following successful rezoning request to the RE. Again, the RE, or Residential State Zoning District, is the Blue Springs zoning district that's most similar to the current and proposed use. The property was annexed back in 1998. Prior to that, it was subdivided into county in 1986 into two lots, and then further subdivided in 2000. Again, the current application here, request only affects the zoning for this Lot 4, or the L-shaped lot. At the April 26 Planning Commission meeting, the Planning Commission held a public hearing and voted unanimously 10 to 0 to recommend approval to this evening of the zoning change. I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions, Ms. Allen? Questions? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone, the applicant or representative here, who should speak? Thank you. Is a representative or the applicant here wish to speak? Yes, would you come up and be sworn in?
[inaudible] you signed this for the testimony about to give this case, give the truth some thought. Need your name and address?
Kelly Mann, 440 Northwest Chateau Drive, Blue Springs.
Mr. Mann?
I presented the case last week, and as he said, it's pretty much cut and dry. Wanted to put up another barn, and just has to have it zoned where Blue Springs got the guidelines for it.
Okay, are there any questions, Mr. Mann? Seeing none, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Sorry, I'm not fast enough, Your Honor.
All right.
I did hear from the Planning Commission that there was maybe a concern that there was going to be auto repair done in this barn.
There are no intentions for a business in the barn.
No intention at all for auto repair? Okay. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions, Mr. Mann? Not, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in support of? Anyone in the audience wish to speak in support of? In opposition to? Opposition to? Close this public hearing. Is there anyone who'd like to introduce it?
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
Okay.
First reading of Bill Number 4113, an ordinance rezoning property from AG County Agriculture to RE Residential Estate. Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no.
Second reading of Bill Number 4113, an ordinance rezoning property from AG County Agriculture to RE Residential Estate. Move the bill be approved on its second and final reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Levisay.
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Bowerman.
Aye.
Councilman Lauer.
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number 4296.
Next, we have introduction and reading of Bill 4114, amending the final plat for Cordell Mason Elementary, Lot 1. Anyone who'd like to introduce it?
I'll introduce it, Your Honor. First reading of Bill Number 4114, an ordinance approving the final plat for Cordell Mason Elementary, Lot 1. Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no.
Second reading of Bill Number 4114, an ordinance approving the final plat for Cordell Mason Elementary, Lot 1.
Your Honor, I move that.
You go ahead.
Go ahead. I move that the ordinance be approved as read and move on to the second reading.
Second.
Discussion? Roll.
Yes, Your Honor, this is on Cordell Mason?
Yes.
Yes. I believe my councilman of the district had some comments and thoughts.
Comments and our thoughts and questions.
Yep.
I spoke with Mr. Allen earlier today because during my time meeting residents in Lake Village, particularly on Christensen Drive, this very subject came up more than once. And the concern is that Cordell Mason and that street has been nice and quiet, and now that school is going to be literally doubled in size. Being in the traffic business, I know what that might mean, but the concern is that already with the buses, the teachers, and the parents, Monday through Friday, up and down that street, because there's no other access, the concern, and then my question would be to the city and the school district, is what are the plans, if any, for another access? And I read about a south access, but there would be limitations. That's my question and concern that was brought to me.
Mr. Johnson, who do you think should answer that?
I would direct this back to our planning department and to Mr. Allen. Thank you, Your Honor. I did speak with Councilman Bowerman earlier today and sent out an email referencing back to the preliminary plat of last year, about last year this time, and a copy was provided for you, hard copy here, prior to the meeting. And that hopefully gives us some indication in terms of the discussion that staff had with the school district at the time, as well as with the fire districts in the area. And again, there's a lot of discussion that was provided in the minutes from the Planning Commission meeting at that time regarding future access, or even present access, beyond just Christensen Drive. As Councilman Bowerman pointed out, there's really just the, I guess, emergency access, for lack of a better term, to the south that's being proposed with this plat. And again, there was some discussion in terms of future access simply to the Eagles Ridge residential subdivision to the south. Major road is really the only east-west road being planned, new road that is being planned in the area, and that is going to come through at the south end of Eagles Ridge. There obviously, there are, there's a seven highway access through the center of Eagles Ridge currently, and that was, again, part of the intent for that future southern access for Cordell Mason, is connecting to Eagles Ridge, and then through there to Seven Highway, but nothing intermediate in the meantime.
Well, then intermediate means that it's not going to be a while.
It's going to be a while.
Okay, Mr. Johnson?
Councilman Bowerman, I might add, attempt to interject a comment here. I believe plans and feedback we've received from the school district indicates that although there may be a substantial increase in the size and the footprint of this facility in the near future when it's completed, I believe they have built-in capacity for future and long-term growth of that facility, which means that initially and immediately, you're not going to see that facility be at capacity, which would mean that an intermediate and long-term development of that would allow as well future development and expansion and connectivity of future city roads, so that as growth would occur with the school population, we would also anticipate and expect some type of growth and development to the south of the facility that would allow for, I believe there's a proposed connection to the south into a residential area.
Correct.
So, it may not address all of your immediate concern, but it is a thought that I know staff has certainly been presented with and we've had to evaluate.
The concern for those people that live on that street, not to belabor this, and knowing also that Chief McCoy would be very aware of not just cars, but even the buses, these people have been aware that even with the posted speed limit, it's not always obeyed. And so their concern is with this excessive traffic and the increase in the school size, that something needs to be done in the future, be it to the south, or maybe a direct route to the due west, right out to Seven Highway, specifically for buses and maybe just teachers, not the parents per se. And then on Sundays, you have the Church of Christ. So they've got that traffic going down that street as well. I bring the concern, and I'm brand-new at this, but I knocked on some doors and they did express that to me. Councilman Fowler?
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, Councilman Bowerman. I'd like to second everything the councilman has brought forth tonight. That's a continuing concern is Christensen. And I realize that it's an awful big burden to shoulder to put in a south ingress egress in there for the school district when there's nobody else over there. There's not the residential growth yet. But at the same time, you know, Councilman Bauer's been out there and talked to the people, and they're ready for something to happen, because it is, Christensen is just overwhelmed right now, especially with the construction traffic. And if there's anything that, you know, the city and the school district could put together to try and provide a south entrance, I know it'd be appreciated. So, but at the same time, I realize this is the approved plans, and that's what we approved about a year ago, so we're in this situation, we're just trying to add to it and share concerns.
Certainly appreciate both of your comments, and certainly we need to proceed with this, but let's have, continue to have a discussion with the school district, and maybe appeal to their goodwill to maybe expedite something with us working with them, to see if we can bring it in a little bit sooner.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Okay, we are on first reading. Any other questions or discussions? Discussion on it? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no.
Second reading of Bill Number 4114, an ordinance approving the final plat for Cordell Mason Elementary, Lot 1.
Move the bill be approved on its second and final reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
For discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Bowerman.
Aye.
Councilman Lauer.
Aye.
Councilman Levisay.
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number 4297.
Next, we have introduction and reading of Bill 4115.
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
Okay.
Your Honor, I'd like to, I'll do the first reading in just a second. However, I would like to point out that all of the councilmen received an updated sections of this particular ordinance that's in front of you, and when it's appropriate, I believe the city attorney would like to make some comments regarding some changes that have occurred. First reading of Bill Number 4115, an ordinance authorizing and directing the issuance and delivery of not to exceed 3,620,000 principal amount of general obligation refunding bond series 2010 of the City of Blue Springs, Missouri, and authorizing certain other documents and actions in connection therewith.
Your Honor, move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the, all of you have been provided with four pages that have highlighted and read some very minor changes that resulted because of pricing situations relative to the bonds, and there needs to be a motion made to amend the bond ordinance to include the changes made on those four pages prior to passage.
Okay, are there any questions, Mr. McDonald? Seeing none, thank you. Any further discussion?
Your Honor, I'd like to move that we go ahead and make that amendment, as indicated in the handout that we received, highlighted in the red.
Okay, there is a motion to amend.
Second.
Okay, discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Next, we have a, now, now we need to vote on the first reading as amended. Is there a motion to?
Motion to approve the first reading as amended.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no.
Second reading of Bill Number 4115 as amended, an ordinance authorizing and directing the issuance and delivery of not to exceed 3,620,000 principal amount of general obligation refunding bond series 2010 of the City of Blue Springs, Missouri, and authorizing certain other documents and actions in connection therewith.
Is there a motion?
Your Honor, I move, proceed with this bill and it'll be assigned to the proper ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
For discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Bowerman.
Aye.
Councilman Lauer.
Aye.
Councilman Levisay.
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number 4298.
Next, I'd like to invite up the Blue Springs Chamber of Commerce and the Buy Blue Springs Campaign.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. You'll have to excuse me, I came down with laryngitis yesterday, just in time for this. I'm gonna let Jeff do most of the talking, but first I want to touch on, about nine months ago, I came to Laura at the chamber to talk about this program. I had learned about this through Trade Magazine, through, but I'm sorry, my name's Mark Whitlow with KNM Office Products, and Chairman of the Buy Blue Springs Task Force. So, about nine months ago, I came to Laura to run this idea by her, and we started a few meetings here, a few meetings there, and now eight months later, we've got a huge task force together that's very excited about this project. About three months ago, we contracted with Ad Trends to come up with a marketing plan that you're gonna see tonight, that you've probably seen in your packets for tonight. So, we're just gonna touch briefly on what we've done in the last eight months, and where we'd like to be in the future, near future, and the long-term future. But before we get to that, I'd like to let you know that we have a lot of support with the city businesses and the city citizens. We've got a few of them here tonight, this is our task force. If you guys would stand up and, thank you very much, we appreciate it. So just to reiterate, we've got a lot of support with this. We wanted to come to the city to talk to you a little bit about it. Jeff's gonna get some highlights going, I'm gonna jump in here when we get to a few of the points, but I'm gonna turn it over to Jeff Meyer from Ad Trends.
Thank you for your time. Our primary objective is to encourage residents to buy Blue Springs when they're considering to make purchases, whenever possible, just to support the business and keep our community unique. We're hoping to seek financial support through the city, through the Chamber of Commerce, through the school district, through CJC, and other local businesses to help support this and sustain it long-term. As far as participation, we are encouraging everybody to be able to participate. We're not gonna, there's nobody that is not eligible to participate in this, and upon registration and becoming a participant in this, they're going to receive, I've already torn it apart here, this, this is our prototype of the Welcome Kit, okay? And inside the kit, each business will receive a welcome letter, some frequently asked questions for their business as far as how they can participate, how they can get their consumers that walk through their front door more involved. Every business will receive 25 flyers to have on their countertops, as well as a counter sign that basically outlines the bullet points of this program. Each business will also receive a CD that will have all camera-ready artwork on it, so that they can use it for their own newsletters, whatever they want to do, to show that they are a participant in this local effort. You can drive by their storefront and see a window decal that is showcasing Little Blue, and that just is another way to show their participation. And they also receive five of these tote bags with Little Blue on it, so that we can just continue to maximize the visibility of this program and increase the awareness in the community. Maybe I'll start flipping through this. Participation benefits, we are going to email out a monthly Buy Blue Springs Tip of the Month, which will just further the education to the businesses and to the consumers. There is going to be promotion of each business through a category listing on BuyBlueSprings.com, which has been up and running since July of last year, and through very little promotion, other than some banners around town, we're already seeing hits of 800 visitors per month on that. So, we're assuming that we're gonna see some pretty stout numbers once we actually try. So, we're also proposing that there's going to be a first annual Buy Blue Springs Week, which we're hoping to hit in and around the holiday season, just again to increase foot traffic to each business. Additional opportunities for participants is to work with Ad Trends Advertising and our campaign designer to integrate your business's logo with the Buy Blue Springs logo for anything they can possibly imagine, whether it's with their website or any other promotional material. Another opportunity is to utilize, and I think this is what makes us unique, utilize an online shopping guide that is going to increase not only the traffic to their website, but also traffic in through the business's front door, and I'll let Mark speak about that.
You know, when I first started this, there's, if you research Buy Local programs throughout the country, it's, they're all very similar. I wanted to come up with something unique that we could use, and this website slash Buy Local, what did you call it, Jeff, the shopping, online shopping guide, is unique to our program. No other development in the country has this, and I think, once we get this started and people see this, they're gonna wanna replicate it. Basically, how it works, it's just like Amazon.com or Google, but it's just local. So, in the search box right there, if you say, "Search Blue Springs," and you put in flowers in our example here, you hit flowers and you hit enter, and it brings up any flowers that any vendor in our database, which is a local vendor, will have in there. So in this case, we've got Be My Love as a bouquet. And as you can see to the right there, it'll give you a price, and you can put a sale price in there if you'd like, but it didn't list the features, it lists the name of the organization, their address, their phone numbers, directions to that store, hours, and then at the bottom, we haven't got this in our setup yet, but it's gonna have the vendor's website, so they can click exactly on their website, go straight to their website, and make the transaction. The transaction takes place on the vendor's website, not on this website, which in turn generates sales tax revenue for the city, and the state, obviously. So, the consumer has the opportunity to, A, call the phone, call them on the phone, B, go to the store themselves in person, or get on the website and make the transaction.
There won't be any transactions through this Buy Blue Springs website, because we're trying to encourage all the transactions to happen through the local business's website themselves. Participation packages, we outlined, we thought that it was necessary to have four different levels of participation to get as many folks involved as possible. The package number one is the Welcome Kit, and you'll see the pricing down below. For that package price, they will receive this Welcome Kit. For the second kit, they will receive, or the second level, they will receive the kit along with a banner ad on the BuyBlueSprings.com website, which will be a direct link to that business's website. The third option is the kit with full access to the online shopping guide that Mark just mentioned, and then the final kit will be, the final participation level is the kit with full access to the shopping guide and a banner ad on both the BuyBlueSprings.com and on the online shopping guide. So it's two different avenues for that business to get some more website traffic. As far as execution, we're hoping that, once we've secured funds, that all the materials can be printed, assembled, and ready to distribute by July 1st, as well, July 1st being the timeline for the task force to be able to go out and start talking to folks a little bit more, educating them, and getting everybody, as many folks involved as possible. Long-term, we're hoping that this, we believe that we've developed something that isn't just going to be a one-and-done. Moving forward, there'll be, we'll continue to update the logo with seasonal designs, Little Blue with a Santa hat on, or a pumpkin under, or whatever it is that's gonna keep it fresh and keep it new and keep it out there in the public. And then, and also being a featured piece at all the major community events. We think it's visibility exposure's gonna be the thing that really fuels this, so. And then, as well as different forms of advertising, either through the local papers, again, through the promotion on the website, getting the banners around town, you know, different window posters, decals on cars, the sky's really the limit on this, it's something that we are pretty passionate about, so.
Thanks, Jeff. And one thing I failed to mention, on the website, it will not only have businesses that sell products, tangible goods, it will have opportunities for insurance brokers, roofers, construction people, so everyone can get involved. And the whole goal of this is obviously to keep our business local, keep businesses buying local, keep our end-users coming to buy business from our businesses, and so forth. And not only will it do that, in my opinion, it'll obviously bring our community closer together, and obviously, in these tough times for businesses and the city budgets, it's gonna make a big difference for all of us to get this done, so. Again, we wanted to open it up for any questions you may have.
Anyone having questions? Councilman Levisay?
What is the role, I saw you mentioned in the presentation, what is the role of nonprofits in the program overall?
It's more for like, the Historical Society and things like that, just to let them show their support, you know, when somebody walks through and sees our banner in there, and let them know that, hey, we're all about this program, we wanna keep the money local, and so forth. So that's really our goal on that. And to bring a reduced rate down, so obviously, they're not gonna be selling any goods or services on the site, so we wanted to give them an opportunity to get involved, so.
What would they receive as far as participation level?
Basically, a minimized packet with this similar educational piece and some flyers to hand out. I mean, and we're gonna offer like a menu or laundry list of extra goods, like if some of the groceries have showed interest on doing bags, you know, you do co-branding on, you know, our logo on one side and Price Chopper on the other, or something like that. So, we could do that with any of the nonprofits also, just to get it out.
As far as their website and link to the Buy Blue Springs?
We absolutely do that. Every single business, museum, anybody that is gonna be participating in this will be on the BuyBlueSprings.com website under their own specific listing that will, again, drive traffic to their, to their site.
Right, and just to get the logo out there, we actually have a mascot made up that looks like Little Blue, and we had him at our luncheon in November, and the school districts talked about putting him in half-times of football games and things like that, just to create awareness and education, so.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Your Honor.
Councilman Carter?
You mentioned a contribution from the city. What are you looking for, do you know yet?
Well, we've talked a little bit about that. I don't know if we were gonna talk about that tonight, but we can if you guys would like.
Well, the reason I bring that up is because I kinda think this is like Field of Dreams. If you build it, they will come, and I think, if anybody's trying to get into the Olive Garden, we know that if you build it, they will come.
Exactly.
And I don't know if it's your group, I see Mr. Starner here. I think what we need to do is market our city to builders and developers outside the city. Let's bring more business to Blue Springs, and I mean, is your program set up to do that at all?
Well, not to that industry right now, but as we mentioned earlier, as we go forth and show the cooperation of the business community and the citizens and the school district and the EDC and so forth, I see, they'll see cooperation and wanna come here, because, A, if a business is successful, obviously, more are gonna come here, as will the residents, so. But to target that industry quite yet, no. But I, as this program develops, of course, we will wanna do that.
Thank you.
And bring them into the fold, so.
Thank you.
Councilman Edmondson, and then Councilman Bauer.
Thank you, Your Honor. My compliments to you, Mark, and your group, you've done a wonderful job as a business owner in this town for, starting 21 years now. I know some of these programs have come forward, and no one has ever come forward with a complete package like this, and also, as a chamber member, I can also compliment in the fact that this program is what it's trying to do, is to market businesses in the community to the community, and I understand what you're trying to say, but really, from our standpoint, we want to make the community aware that there are things here locally they can go buy, purchase, without having to drive outside our community. We all benefited by that, because, one, as a citizen, you're saving your dollars, because you're not driving outside the community. Your tax dollars are going to support the community, which goes back to road improvements, you know, water, everything that we take for granted, our park systems, so it's a win-win for all situations on this, and my compliments to your group for doing what you're doing.
Thank you. Thank you from all of us. Appreciate that.
Councilman Byerman?
Your Honor, thank you. I want to thank the chamber also as well. I'm just a recent new member, but a big supporter of Buy Blue Springs. I had a question and an idea earlier on, I had shared it with Laura at her office, and that is, you know, the bucks, that the big dollars
Right.
That are around, all of the, well, you've got some at your store.
Yeah.
Other cities in the country have printed money that's only good in their city, or commemorative coins for sesquicentennial, things like that. Is there any way that you could take those dollars, and maybe you'd have to have a serial number, but they'd only be good for a dollar purchase or discount in Blue Springs for members of the chamber that support Buy Blue Springs? So, that $1 could be, say at Hy-Vee, you could, and it'd be $1, and they'd be circulated within the city. Is that a possibility?
You know, I've seen that idea out there when I was researching the Buy Local programs throughout the country, and a local bank actually did that for one of the company, or country, or cities, excuse me, in the country. And the logistics of that looked pretty tough to start out. But, you know, ongoing, I think it's a great idea, because one of the first ideas was to do a coupon book. And to do similar things, not have the serial numbers and circulate, it'd be a one-and-done deal. But I thought about that. I think that's a great idea to do, you know, but just the logistics when we're first starting up might be tough, but down the road for certain, along with, you know, gift cards with Little Blue on there for Christmas time, or any time. So, they're only good at local businesses.
That's what I was thinking, or Santa Calagon, or Christmas, something that would stay right here in town.
Right. Exactly. And, I mean, obviously, that's the ultimate goal, and how we get there, as the program proceeds throughout our permanent history, we'll have many programs that will bop in just like that. And then, when the successful ones hit, we'll keep using them, so.
Well, and our primary objective was to make sure that we included both retail and service into this program. Taken, you know, I like the idea, and there's tons of potential for growth on this, but, you know, maybe taking a dollar into Bill Snyder Insurance Agency wouldn't, you know, have the same impact of taking it to Hy-Vee, like you said, or whatever. So, we kept that in mind as we were going out, talking to people and developing this, that everybody can take advantage of this, so. Anyway, just piggybacking on that.
Yeah. Any other comments from council members? You know, I think this is the birth of a program that certainly will grow into adolescence and then to maturity. And now, we'll take all these comments under advisement, and as you build a program, you can incorporate other things as you go. I think, from our perspective, we need to decide, at one point, our guest tax was money that was appropriated to the chamber to do some of these various things. That was withdrawn, I think, at one point in time, and certainly, that's an avenue, I think, that we can proceed this time if it's the will of the council. So, unless there's some objection, we can instruct the staff to work out something and bring it back to you for your approval.
Your Honor, I think that's a great idea.
Okay. About objection?
I'd like to see what it looks like.
Okay. Staff, work it out, and bring us something back.
Your Honor, we will sit down, I believe, Mr. Pelham, our Assistant City Administrator, has been involved in a number of discussions and meetings with Laura Vermillion. I believe we do have some information that we can process and bring back to you with a more detailed plan of maybe what the ask from the chamber is, and how that may be leveraged and partnered with other participants in the community as well. And so, we will take those instructions, and we'll move forward, and we'll bring something back to you to respond and react to.
Okay. Thank you very much for your presentation, and
Thank you.
... the members out in the t-shirts and otherwise that's in attendance tonight.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for coming. Next, we have a presentation. For those that don't know, we have 11 planning commissioners, and each year, we try to send at least a couple of them to a national planning conference. This year, it was Commissioner Susan Colpepper and Commissioner James May. See, Mr. May is not here, but Commissioner Colpepper is, and she would like to come and share with us a little bit about what she learned and knowledge.
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. May was, had a prior obligation, so he did want me to be sure to mention the fact that we are really excited about our staff, just to start things off. We found that a lot of staff does not provide the information to their planning commissioners, as our staff, you know, who's doing this. So, we're very, very excited about that, and it's a very, very nice feeling to be able to say, as our staff works very hard and provides all the basic information to the planning commission on which we can base our decisions. Sorry. I'm not putting you on this slide of things. I just wanted to take a minute to briefly go through some of the things that, some of the classes that I attended. We spent two and a half days in classes. We had a lot of items to choose from, and some of them, we couldn't get in the door, they were so crowded. But we got a lot of good information, and you get just so full, it's hard to say, well, we're going to, we'll get this item and this item. So, I'm just going to quickly through some of these things. The first thing that we started off with was a breakfast, which in the past has been very beneficial, but I would say that going forward, I think we could save less money and not do that anymore. The breakfast was given more for people who had never been on a planning commission. And so, it was something that we could have bypassed, although the food was good. And before I go any further, I also want to say that we are very appreciative of having this put in the budget so we could go to this. It's very important to have the education. When you get on a commission and you're making these decisions that affect the entire community, you want to be able to do it with the best education that you can press. We learned about fixing our downtown. We discussed making streets places where people stop, stroll, linger, and spend their money. We touched on rethinking the performance measurements and how to manage practices. Some of the items we discussed in conjunction with that were parking issues, and I know we have a parking problem downtown. Some of these solutions were very interesting. I will tell you, one community has pulled in parking, but they pulled it backward, so their cars were all facing out. I don't know how they do that, but that's what they do, and it works for them. We talked about parking meters, we talked about parking lots, keeping the flow of traffic and not using up spaces in front of businesses for people who are shop owners, and reserving those for people who are going to spend their money in our stores. We also had a class on the Guide to Comprehensive Plans, which was interesting. As I say, our staff gives us a lot of guidance, some communities get none. And so, it's nice that we were able to be pretty much on top of the way to put a comprehensive plan together. We talked about customizing design guidelines to meet the community needs. We talked about cases for density. These were all different seminars. We talked about mixed user zoning and TODs, and community education and engagement. One of the things that one of the communities has is kind of like our police academy for the citizens, but it is for those people who want to see how the local government actually works. And they meet, once a year, they have this session, it's several evenings, but they go through. Here's what happens if you want development. Here's how it starts out. Here are the guidelines. They talk about things through the planning commission, what the planning commissioners actually look at, and then, how they vote, and why they vote the way that they do. It's very difficult sometimes for someone in an audience to say, well, why do they vote that way? They don't know what we have to look at, and I think it's very important. And then, they took them all the way through the city council, what the city council looks at when they make their decisions. So, I think that this is something that, you know, down the line, I think would be very beneficial for our community, for a lot of people out here that could get more involved, if they really understood how it all works. We talked about facades of buildings and improving appearances. One of the things that we do not do, that I would also like to see, and other communities do, is a class for those people who are coming in as new members of the commission. We have new members appointed, we hand them a stack of books, and we say, okay, have at it. It's an awful lot to digest, and I think it would be very beneficial if we could have a four-hour session, or a couple of two-hour sessions, and actually say, here is how these things work. It's not enough to just hand people a stack of books and say, well, you know, we're going to reference this particular page in this particular ordinance. We really need to understand how we seem to arrive at, what we need to look at, and what we legally are obligated to do, which is so very important, as Mr. McDonald is always stressing to us. The other thing that we used to do, that a lot of communities do, we haven't done in a long, long time, is have a joint meeting with the commission and the city council. It would be nice if we could have a work session where we would just sit down and talk about where are we, where do we want to be a year, where do we want to be five years, the short-range and the long-range plans, so that everybody's on the same page. You know, you have, some people may say, well, on this corner, I see this happening, or I want this section of town strictly for auto sales, but it's not shared. And I think that as we have the opportunity to sit down and share this information, we would be better prepared to make those right decisions, as things come before us, fortisoming, et cetera. We talked about so many different items that would affect our city. One of the vendors that we had discussion with discussed signage. And I haven't had an opportunity, unfortunately, my computer crashed, so I'm just getting caught up, but one of the cities in Denver area has LED signage, and they're trying to get rid of it, because it's not working. So, I think that these are the types of things that, once I get this pulled together, hopefully this week, I'll be able to share. I do have a book on the information. But, you know, we can benefit from what some of the other communities have done, and why they're saying it doesn't work for them, rather than reinventing the wheel. I want to thank the council for keeping the funds in the budget for this type of education. It is so important. I want to thank you for the opportunity that is given to the commission members to attend these, and hope that we'll be able to afford to continue to do so. I will be presenting more information as I get it to the commission, and some of this, I'm sure you have watched the movie, and it's replication of information. But I think it's really important that the council understands how important we think it is, this education we continue. Any other questions?
Any questions of Commissioner Colpepper?
Your Honor.
Councilman Bauer?
Yes, Commissioner Colpepper, I'd like to thank you for all your service and all your dedication to Planning Commission over years of service, and look forward to hearing about the lessons learned. I seem to learn from the school of hard knocks, and if other people have learned a lesson of what didn't work, I think that'd be great to have you follow up on that. I'd be very interested in hearing about that.
Well, particularly since we're now looking at our signage, I think that it's important to look at, as you say, not reinventing the wheel.
Yeah, yeah, great. Okay.
Your Honor, if I may?
Yes.
I would like to, one, thank you for your service, but also, kind of reemphasize what you're saying. I don't think any education is ever wasted, whether it be commissions, boards, or even on the council, even, and going on those trips, sometimes on these boards and commissions, your focus is so narrow to the community that you live in, and your dedication to that, it really is a breath of fresh air to go out and see what other communities are doing, see what other people are dealing with. One builds a better appreciation of what we have, which I think we have one of the best communities in the nation, but it also shows you some ideas that maybe they're better than you're, and kind of opens your minds up. So, I fully feel that those are dollars well-spent, taxpayers' dollars well-spent. So, feel free, I would always back that, to be in the budget.
Thank you.
Certainly, I've always encouraged participation, because none of us operates an island. You need to be able to get out and network and learn from others, and certainly, you've brought back some good ideas that we've noted, that a lot of them are very simple, it's just a matter of doing it. So, certainly, we appreciate you being attentive to the things you went out to learn, and you're bringing them back, and we'll benefit from them as a result of that. So, thank you so much for doing that.
You're very welcome.
All right. That brings us to mayoral announcements. Before I go to thoughts to pundit, congratulations is in order to our city administrator. Mr. Johnson has been elected to the Missouri City County Managers Association Board of Directors. So, anyway, congratulations.
Congratulations.
Next, we have thoughts to pundit. Tonight comes from L.P. Jackson. I have no clue who L.P. Jackson is, maybe some of you do, but his words are profound. The pessimist sees a difficulty in every opportunity. The optimist, the opportunity in every difficulty. That concludes my thoughts to pundit. So, now, I would accept, well, no, we got, we're going to switch the agenda, yeah, we need to take, because we had executive session, we're going to go to visitors, and then we'll have executive session. I have one visitor's form, Mrs., is it Galen Renee Smith? Did I pronounce your first name right?
Galen.
Okay. Oh, so Y there, I thought it was a U. Okay, Galen Renee Smith. I think you want to talk about the US Census and trespassing?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Good evening to all of you. This is my very first council meeting.
Well, welcome.
Thank you. I was going to be here this evening on another matter, but yesterday, a census worker came to my door, and she was, I wasn't dressed, I was in, you know, pajamas and typewear, and I, she kept knocking in an annoying way, and I have puppies, and I was having to try to organize things to get to the door. I looked out to see that it was a woman, so I went ahead and answered the door, not fully dressed, but I thought it was okay, since it was a female. And I opened the door to see what she wanted, and she grabbed my door handle and tried to come in, which I found very offensive and strange. She, and at that point, I said, ma'am, I have no trespassing signs posted in my yard, and I'm asking you to leave. At that point, I didn't know who she was, or why she was there, but I didn't like the way she handled herself. And so, she would not leave, she kept being very persistent, and she showed me a badge, and I said, ma'am, I just would like for you to leave. And she would not leave after I asked her to. And at that point, it didn't matter who she was with, I just, I didn't want her to be there. So, when she, she kept trying to make her case and would not leave, and, but finally, she did leave. So, I called the police and asked them to ask her not to come back to my house. And what I encountered, and that is one of the reasons why I'm here this evening, is because there are two separate issues that I want to address with you. Because, first, let me just tell you that I'm here to work in cooperation with the city of Blue Springs. I agree with all of you that we have a wonderful city, and I do, I am in a very unique position in that I, over the past six years, from time to time, have worked as a private contractor, gathering signatures to put on the ballot, which is another part of the political process and a part of our government, which is why and a part of our government, which is what they're trying to do with the census. So, I have respect for the process and our constitution and our city, and the rights and laws of everyone. And so, from that basis, I have, I have a greater understanding, I would say, of the laws with regard to knocking on someone's door, gathering information, and those kinds of things than the average citizen. And I'm also greater aware of abuses that have occurred in regard to these things, okay? So, I bring a special, unique position and information to this. Well, I had gotten these census forms, and I have been busy with my puppies, because I'm doing it all by myself, and I have not had an opportunity to address that. So, I wasn't surprised that she came to my door. But I didn't like the way she did it. So, I, when I called the police, they took the position that it was not trespassing. Now, having done, having been a private contractor, working as a circulator, I can assure you, I know, I know for a fact that if people do not want you there, they, depending on whether it's public or private property, they most certainly have the right to ask you to leave and expect you to leave. So, I knew what rights I had and what rights they did not have. And so, I knew that that was not correct, and the position of the police department was wrong. Are they, dispatcher?
Let me interrupt you here-
Okay.
-because I'm getting this dissertation. What are you asking us to do?
What I would like to do is, well, this is twofold. First of all, I would like for the council and the city of Blue Springs to recognize that there are some of us, like myself, who are offended by government intrusion to the degree that they are gathering in this census and in former census. And so, I would like for the city of Blue Springs to stand with those of us who are in disagreement with this and respect our rights, to only participate to the extent that the law requires.
I'm afraid that's not gonna happen, because it's not a city decision, this is the federal government, and there's some reasons why they do that. Your city that you love benefits by having an accurate count, and it's been advertised that you had an opportunity to mail that form in, and for the ones that did not mail it in, May 1st was the date that they were gonna start knocking on your door.
Yes.
And the city of Blue Springs cannot stand in the way of the federal government trying to get an accurate count of his, of the population.
I have no objection to the count. Where I have an objection is going beyond that, and that is the kind of government intrusion that I am in objection to.
I think that you need to take that case up with Congress or the federal government. The Blue Springs, the city of Blue Springs cannot do that. We can't, we don't determine what's on that census data that they collect. We don't make that determination.
No, I, I'm not asking you to do that. What I'm asking you to do is to respect my right to choose not to participate, with this exception, which is my understanding, unless you know of some law that I am not aware of. And that is one reason why I'm here, because in speaking to the police, I have not been informed of anything that would require me by law to participate in that census, other than provide them with the information that that is a one-person household, okay? That is the only thing they have a right to obtain from me as a citizen, from my understanding.
Let me ask you this, did you get into all those 10 questions that the lady insisted you answer the 10 questions?
No, I didn't go there.
So, you basically didn't provide her any information at all?
No, I asked her to leave. When she tried to walk into my door-
So, it's just be one less person counted for Blue Springs?
No.
Which effects are?
I disagree. I made up, first of all, I went online, I brought, I put together information that was on the website that I went to, that I would like to read to the council.
Well, I don't, I don't think tonight is not tonight to do that.
Okay.
I think we understand your point. You feel that the person trespassed, obviously, a police department didn't see that as the case.
Well, that officer, that dispatcher didn't, the sergeant did not call me back. Today, I called. The other sergeant that I talked to agreed with me after giving them the information from the website, they agreed with my position that that was correct.
Well, let's do this, our chief of police is here, let him take that under advisement, and he can talk to you offline on any thing that happened within his department?
Well, yes, I mean, I'm not here to, I'm not here to get the police in trouble, I'm just, what I'm, I'm trying to make the point that, and all, and I have spoken to various different people, and so many have different views, so it seems important to the city of Blue Springs to get on the same page. There is legal standing already.
Well, my page is, I want everybody in Blue Springs to be counted, because it affects the revenue that this city gets from the federal government.
Okay, and I'm in agreement with that.
Yeah.
We're on the same page there. I, but I'm, well, what I am asking, and what I'm asking Blue Springs to be respectful of, is that while I want to post that I am a one-person household on my door, I do not want to be harassed, I do not want to be approached in an unlawful manner, which is what, why there is a restraining order against them, they, some of these people come into your home, they threaten, they threaten you with fines and imprisonment, and I don't want to be mistreated that way.
Okay.
So, I will post it, and I, and-
Certainly, you can post anything, I suppose you can post anything you want on your door.
Yeah, I mean, that's how I choose to handle it.
I don't know if there's a prohibition against that, but, okay.
But I will be counted.
Okay. Now, what's your second point?
And then, just the second point is that, you know, not everybody agrees, you know, a lot of people think, well, why not just go ahead and send it in? I've, you know, I was speaking to the assistant, you know, administrator, you know, he had a different view. The bottom line is, this has already been decided in a court of law, and so, unless there is some, something that has developed since that was decided, then, and if that's the case, and what I'm saying is, I would like for the police department to provide me with that, so that I can act as a law-abiding citizen. I want to be a law-abiding citizen, and also, work with the city of Blue Springs and do what is best for Blue Springs and myself. Yeah.
I think that's fair. We want you to do what's best for Blue Springs and yourself.
Good.
We're in agreement.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. Well, thank, thank you for coming, Chief McCord.
If you find the name and address and phone number-
Absolutely.
...to do is, we'll check into what the law requires for you and let you know that and if that'll help.
Okay.
And then, we'll get real specific for you.
Okay, and then-
We'll check the federal government for you, just obtain the information that you need.
Well, the reason I have kind of a problem with that is the federal government is overstepping their boundaries with, and so, I may not be in agreement with that.
And then, we can then provide you with a contact to them, so you can express those concerns to them as well.
And I've also been, they advise you online not to have any dealings with the Census Bureau, because they have a tendency to harass people and so forth. I don't want to be involved in all of that. I, that's why I'm posting this on my door. What I'm asking is that the police, just please honor the trust, no trespassing.
Yeah. Councilman Fowler?
Yeah, Your Honor, the reason they were there aside, because we could argue that in our, you know, differences of opinion, and I realize it'd be valuable to have her counted, but at the same time, reason why they were there doesn't really matter. If somebody is on your property and they don't have a warrant to be there, the police need to help out.
That's my point.
If this citizen feels that they, and the federal government, they need to come with a warrant for whatever reason, and if she needs them cleared from her property and they won't leave, that's a concern.
Yes.
That's the simple part of this, and the reason they were there, I don't know.
Yes, that's my issue, yes.
And again, I don't think we're gonna decide that tonight. I think Chief McCord will investigate it.
You missed issues that they were actually already calling before our people got there.
Yes, I made the mistake of not contacting the police, and that's, I figured that out, and I will handle that differently if they come back, which-
I don't think they'll probably come back.
Well, online, it said they're, they do-
They will keep coming back.
About five times.
Why won't they just invite you to come to another place or to seek another way of communication, other than?
Well, they do send you the forms, but the questions on the forms are inappropriate and go beyond the scope of their authority.
10 questions.
Huh?
10 questions.
Well, on the short form, it's 10 questions, as I understand it, and apparently, there's a long form. I've never even opened up my packages, so I don't know what forms they sent me, but it could be a problem, because if you don't fully answer it, you can be fined, according to what was online, and you can actually go to prison. Well, I don't want to go to prison, and I don't, I can't afford to be fined, but I do want to be counted, because that's what the constitution required, and I do want to be a law-abiding citizen.
We'll check into it and see if we can provide you some insight on it.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. All right. I don't have any other speaker appearance forms. We need to go into executive session.
I would like to make a motion that we go into executive session, pertinent to Real Estate Matters, Section 610.021, parentheses 2, Massachusetts, Missouri.
Second.
On your favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those know, let us take about five minutes to allow those people in the audience to be dismissed, and maybe take a bathroom break.